Meeting in order, please. If you would rise and we'll do an invocation and a pledge. If you bow your heads. Darlene, Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for all the many blessings, Lord, just to be with us in this time of the season. And let us remember, it is for your son, Lord. Just to be with people as they travel, have, give them safe traveling mercies to go see family and back home, Lord. And we also want to thank our two commissioners that are leaving us tonight, Lord. Thank you for what they've done for this community, the ability to serve, Lord, and just be with us. And as we travel again, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to do a pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank everybody for being here. Before we get started, I did want to say something. We do have two outgoing commissioners and we have a nice plaque and we'll take a picture. But I do, I do want to say thank you all for, for what you've done for the community. It's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of long nights, not a lot of thank yous, but we do thank you for doing what you've done for our community and the commitment you've made. I know a lot of times, we miss a lot of times from our family and friends and other events that we need to go to for that, and y'all have given that up. And again, we appreciate it, that all that y'all have done. And we look forward to y'all coming back and getting on some other boards. We have some appointments we need to fill, so y'all are welcome to come. But no, I did want to say thank you. And I do have a plaque. And I think, Nick, you want to, Nick, take a picture with us real quick?
Thank you, Carter.
Yep.
Go ahead. Tom, I'll let you go first. Age before beauty.
Don't let me take a picture by myself with Carter.
Come on. Come on, we do like.
Let's get a little back photo.
When do we hear we're talking to?
Starting in about thirteen years.
No, I got two.
That is like a murder weapon.
If you want to do that, you want to get.
All right, all three. One, two, three.
No, I got the same one for six months.
All right, all three. One, two, three. Thank you.
I got the same one for six months.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
All right, all three. One, two. One, two, three.
I'll travel a little bit if that's been. Oh, you don't want to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I need this as a weapon.
Thank you, Carter. Yeah, thank you all. There'd be a lot of things on that thing. Thank you all again. I, we do appreciate your service and, and commitment. It's a lot. All right, recommend, we don't have any elected officials here. Newly elected Alex, you'll be here next month, so looking forward to having you on our board. See any other elected officials here? All right, I guess we'll start with the approval of the agenda.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following changes. Remove item number seven from the consent agenda and add personnel and real estate to the executive session.
I'll second that motion.
All right, you got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we need the approval of our November twenty twenty-four meeting minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, approval of our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're down to a non-public hearing. Item, Audra. James S. Leach, first read of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for four point five acres, parcel zero two nine one dash zero four five dash zero one.
Good evening. Yes, Mr. Leach is looking to rezone his property from the RR two point five district to the RR one point five. The reason for this is he'd like to subdivide and have a parcel for his grandson. This is only for first readings and no action is needed. This will be heard by the planning and zoning commission actually tomorrow night, December seventeenth, and then it will be brought back before this board on January fourteenth for second reading. Partial is located on all of Grinch Road. And you can see the current zoning in the area is RR two point five and some pick five, and these are requesting RR one point five.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Audra? Okay, thank you, Audra.
Thank you, Audra.
Next up is Ben with our county administrator items.
Yes, item one is the consideration of two thousand twenty-five Bryan County annual budget. Each year, the county requires to adopt a budget, include revenues and expenditure, the parks for the following year. Staff has worked over the past several months coordinated with all managers, directors to develop the housing budget. That continues to allow Bryan County to provide services and resources that meet the needs of our continuously growing community. This year's budget total expenditure is two hundred and thirty-eight million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Our recommendation is to adopt the two thousand five Bryan County annual budgets. All the fee schedules are presented in this budget book.
Okay. Take a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and adopt the two thousand twenty-five Bryan County annual budget and all fee schedules as presented in the two thousand twenty-five budget book.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Ben, thank you for y'alls, you and your team, for the budget. And then the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you.
Item two is consideration of the two thousand twenty-five L-MIG plan. Each year, the Georgia Department of Transportation offers grant funding to local governments through the local maintenance improvement grant program under the known L-MIG to help with road projects. For two thousand twenty-five, Bryan County has been awarded five hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents. Qualified G-RAT requires the county to match this amount, which almost equals one hundred and seventy thousand. However, on top of those supplies, as empowered by T-Supplies, Bryan County is able to bring the total building, structure, seal, repair, and footwork to almost one point four sixty million dollars. This is a request to allow the chairman to sign off on the two thousand twenty-five G dot L-MIG package and submit to the state for approval by G.R.
Okay, take a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize you to execute the two thousand twenty-five G dot L-MIG package for submitting to the Georgia Department of Transportation for their review.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Our Atlantic Waste Service Contract Amendment.
Item three is the Atlantic Waste Contract Amendment, number three. The county originally signed a three-year contract with Atlantic Waste back on December of two thousand twenty, which was close to the end of February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. This was also extended, a period of time to, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Now, Atlantic Waste forces asking to renew the contract for a new five-year period, starting January first, two thousand twenty-five, running through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. Here's some key points here. The new monthly rate will be nineteen dollars per resident. It's currently seventeen point ten. This is about an perceived increase. Staff has examined some other charges in the area. This is still very, very competitive. The fee includes both solid base and side report, rate for just each year, basically changes in single price index. Any agreement can be canceled by the board of commissioners, but at least signed days notice for each, before the end of each calendar year. So after researching this proposition, our recommendation is approve amendment number three to Atlantic Waste's contract.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve contract amendment number three of the Atlantic Waste Agreement, increasing the monthly fee for service to nineteen dollars per resident and extending the expiration date of the contract to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ben. Next up, Shooting Range.
Next up is a, is a project that's been in the budget for a couple of years now and we haven't stayed working on it. But this is the Bryan County Sheriff's Shooting Range Design Services Contract. We're working with the task order one seventeen. The county staff has been working with the sheriff's office to give initial ideas of site surveys developed in the Bryan County Shooting Range. The sheriff's department, you know, the project, we're in the design phase. The task has been given, will be considered, given to Thomas and Hutton, who will handle the professional engineering and design work. It's a survey, site design, structural, civil design, firmly insisted in construction of their site. This proposed facility will put a fifty-yard and one hundred and fifty-yard shooting range, cover the ravines, a proof out there, a training facility with a garage, office space, restroom, storage, and covered storage area as well. Additional features, of course, like the ditch ponds and all the other stuff, so, so, I think, part of the design. Our recommendation is approve task order one seventeen with Thomas and Hutton Design Services as our chairman to execute the business and the cost, of course, will be around one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Thomas and Hutton's scope of services and authorize the chairman to execute task order number one seventeen in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the Bryan County Shooting Range Design Services.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Nope.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Next up is our Motorola Microwave System Upgrade.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Okay.
Item five is the Motorola Microwave System Upgrade Relocation. The county's planning to upgrade its current team on the system with modern Motorola seven hundred, one hundred megahertz public safety communication system. This upgrade will provide more reliable connection between the both ends of the county, which is essential for public safety operations. Including this, is upgrading microwave systems, relocating critical communication equipment, and improving infrastructure and moving the equipment to a new communication tower owned by Pac Communications from the OWPAN tower. Motorola, of course, is the sole source provider due to its proprietary software, which allows for real-time monitoring along with the certification of maintenance and maintenance. This upgrade will also make sure the county meets the latest regulatory technical standards. Total project cost is two million, four hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, spread across a five-year lease purchase agreement, and payments will be almost five hundred and fifty-two thousand annually, with first payment due December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, which was included in your earlier budget. And our recommendation is that you approve the Motorola Microwave System Upgrading Relocation Project. It might help with staff handling paperwork for this five-year lease purchase.
Okay, we need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Motorola Microwave System Upgrade and Communication Equipment Relocation and authorize staff to execute all necessary paperwork to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions, requiring five annual payments of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Very none. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Laura Holler, no one tell them you can come back in for.
Item six is consideration of Brian, which is from the Bay of President of Bryan County. On October seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the two APG are for two permanents or one withdrawal of the local county. But Bryan County needs to address any short-term impact for these permits. There are special conditions require Bryan and Little Counties to collaborate, specifically with the creation of a joint municipal managed fund, potentially with contributions from other entities, and also use this fund to handle any potential impacts from flurried hospital wells within a five-mile radius on the I-sixty and the Highway one nineteen intersection from that area. This is an evolving plan that will adapt to ensure future needs and challenges over the years. This is not going to be a one-time plan. It's created a two-ball. It's relies on APG recommendations after scientific studies. Current staff has worked with Little County to prepare the GSP program manual and draft an intergovernmental agreement that would create both the program and the managed fund. Our recommendation is approve the GSP program manual and authorize the IGA to officially establish a joint Bryan-Bullet groundwater sustainability program.
Before we vote on this, I, I know I had talked to somebody over, our commissioner-elect over in Bullock County today. I don't know if any of the Bullock County commissioners or anybody-elect showed up.
They did not because you were not going to allow them to speak.
That's not true, ma'am. I, we're not going to have an out, I just, ma'am, they said they could come if they wanted to. Is any of them here? They're not here? You can speak at the end. Yes, ma'am. All right, since they're not here to speak, we go ahead and take a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute the groundwater sustainability agreement with Bullock County, establishing the Bryan-Bullet Groundwater Sustainability Program.
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. I will say, this, this program is, is a start. These documents, these documents can be amended. They can be changed as we go along. It's a living document, but we have to start somewhere, and this is the start of it. So go ahead, Ben, next.
Item seven is the consideration of groundwater sustainability program advisory committee appointments. As a part of the homeowners of Bryan-Bullet Groundwater Sustainability Program, both counties are required to form an advisory committee. Committee consists of about three members from each county who provide recommendation on program goals, administration, and regulations. The reason for all is to ensure the GSP remains evolving and adaptive plan that addresses future order needs and impacts with the opportunity. After reviewing candidates, it has been determined three individuals with expertise who contribute valuable insights exist. First is Skip Yeoman, retired employee of the Department of Public Health. And second is Pete Peterson with Greenland World Drilling. And number three is Christopher Poldeski with the professional geologist, a geologist from another association. Additionally, alternate has been recommended Stuart Dixon, who is a professional geologist of Terragon. Recommendation is to approve the appointment of these candidates including the alternate.
All right, we'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Skip Yeoman, Pete Peterson, and Christopher Poldeski to the GSP Advisory Committee with Stuart Dixon serving as an alternate per staff's recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And down to Genesis Drive.
Item eight is Genesis Drive Water and Sewer Extension Contract Award. This is a partnership with JDA Bryan County Committee of Design, for media, structural, site water and sewer improvements to be served in the part of the county. Bryan County gave Thomas and Hutton Design Program Genesis Drive Water and Sewer Extension. PNH prepared contract bid document associated plans for the destruction of this project. Bids were received for it October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, evaluated by the engineers. Two were received with McClendon Enterprises, the upper company for utilities. Our recommendation is considered approval on the Genesis Drive Water and Sewer Extension to McClendon Enterprises in the amount of nine hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and award the Genesis Drive Water and its sewer extension to McClendon Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of nine hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents to initiate the project.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Thank you.
Next up is the consideration of change order number one for the Seaport sixteen regional water main contract to accommodate the impending water system improvements of Bryan County. Order of Blackfoot Backflip Preventive Testing System is needed to facilitate quick, easy building testing orders. Evergreen County has five permanent sanding stations for saw along the line, which is outside the scope of the current contract documents. The existing construction plans show the existing advanced system is a twelve-inch system. Underfield contract found that invited an eighteen-inch command system. Contract order, we manhandle, we fight to accommodate this change in the build. These efforts taken by the contractor have resulted in additional costs to previous projects. That's why you're seeing change order number one before you today. So our recommendation is to approve change order number one while the installation of additional projects protects the central mission project according to county's requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number one for the Seaport sixteen regional water main in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. All right, down to number ten, Bryan Sewer Flow Diversion Contract Change Order.
Number ten is a consideration of the South Bryan Sewer Flow Diversion Contract Change Order number two. But in the current contract, some parts of the project came in under the seven hundred, almost one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. However, there are additional improvements we'd like to include in the state upgrades, which monitors the water stations. Let's just know if the final move is like this, utility market posts, connections at various locations. There's electrical mag here as well. These additions add two hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars to the project after deducting the savings overall cost for the project is one hundred and ten, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. So our recommendation is to approve the change order number two to allow these upgrades to factor in the cost savings to the contract price will be reduced by one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. So the project timeline remains unchanged.
Motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number two for the Bryan County Sewer Flow Diversion Project in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, thank you. That motion carries. All right, down to our Oak Level Road Change Order.
Item number eleven is the consideration of change order for traffic management at Oak Level Road. That's the roundabout project commences. Bryan County is having the traffic control officer to help provide traffic during the busy mornings while construction continues at this location. The change is meant, meant to keep traffic flowing smoothly and for safety of your people. The original project bid was one day, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This change order will increase that cost by fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Do you need to do the full update on that project after meeting? I'm sure you're very curious.
Perfect.
Very curious. Okay. Any motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number one in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, providing morning law enforcement assistance for the duration of the SR one forty-four Oak Level Road Construction Project.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, our Water and Sewer Group with Pulte Homes LLC.
Item twelve is the Water and Sewer Service Agreement with Pulte Home, fully developed city. They are developing a six hundred and ninety-hundred-foot residential oilways. Probably conditions are sketch, flat, preliminary flat approved with Pulte Home Company's bar entered to water the sewer service agreement to address terms and conditions and potential water sewer service worry. County concluded but not limited to the cost per year and the phasing of itself. The staff has worked to engineer and plan the zones, worked quite a few days along with Pulte. They hammered out this agreement, and our recommendation is to approve the Water and Sewer Agreement with Pulte Home LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute the water and sewer service agreement with Pulte Home Company LLC as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Discussion is, thank you guys very much for working so hard to get that done. I know that was a, a long time coming, so.
On our staff. Yeah, that's right. Take a couple of days. All right, had a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our match commitment letter for GMA Stormwater Master Plan.
This is the consideration of match commitment letter from GMA for the stormwater master plan. Earlier this year, Bryan County staff worked with Thomas and Hutton to apply for funding for GMA, who are the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. The funding request, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to develop or continue to develop a stormwater master plan. This is the next phase of the ongoing project. We've been doing it for years to get this funding. The match, the county must provide a match twenty-five percent, which equates to eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. GMA has asked for a letter of commitment to confirm Bryan County's participation. Our recommendation is to approve the local match and submit this commitment letter to GMA so we can inform the planning process.
Motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a commitment of matching funds and authorize staff to submit a letter to GMA reflecting the same.
Second.
Second. I know this is all of Bryan County, Ben. Does this include the city of Richmond Hill, too?
Well, our drainage affects theirs and theirs affects ours.
So they, are they participating in this program, too?
This is one of the.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I, I knew we work with them on it, but yeah, just make sure they're aware of it. Okay. And a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, thank you. That motion carries. All right, we're down to our county attorney items. Aaron, or his? Okay. Well, you are going.
You could have just stayed on vacation.
I was thinking about it. This is Gage, his big long haul.
Oh, you're fresh.
Give Gage.
So for county attorney item number one, we've got the easement agreement and facility, electrical facility modification agreement with Georgia Transmission Corporation. In conjunction with the Bryan-Bullet Regional Water Main Project, it's necessary to acquire an easement from Georgia Transmission Corporation in order to construct water main improvements adjacent to Structure forty-two owned by GTC located on Old Kyler Road. The necessary documents needed to secure the easement from GTC include an agreement to modify electrical facilities in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and a temporary encroachment agreement for easement application, EA twenty-four dash oh eight seven. And the recommendation here is to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment to modify GTC electrical facilities and for Ivan Hotepp, one fifty- modify GTC electrical facilities and for Ivan Hotap one fifteen KV T slash L Structure forty-two in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and to authorize the staff to execute the corresponding temporary encroachment agreement for Structure forty-two.
Okay, motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment to modify GTC electrical facilities for Ivan Hotap one fifteen KV TL Structure forty-two in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and authorize staff to execute the corresponding temporary encroachment agreement.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, that motion carries, all right. Gage, next one up?
All right, next one up, county attorney item number two. This is essentially the same scenario, but with respect to Structure thirty-four of Georgia Transmission Corporation. So again, in conjunction with the Bryan Olick Regional Water Main Project, it's necessary to acquire an easement from GTC in order to construct water main improvements adjacent to Structure thirty-four owned by GTC located on Old Kyler Road. Necessary documents needed to secure the easement agreement, easement, pardon me, include an agreement to modify electrical facilities in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and a temporary encroachment agreement for easement application twenty-four dash oh nine six. Our recommendation here is to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment, I'm sorry, the agreement to modify GTC electrical facilities for Ivan Hotap one fifteen KV TL Structure thirty-four in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven five hundred and ninety-two dollars and to authorize staff to execute the corresponding temporary encroachment agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment to modify GTC electrical facilities for Ivan Hotap one fifteen KV TL Structure thirty-four in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and authorize staff to execute the corresponding temporary encroachment easement.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, thank you. George, did we have anybody sign up for public comment? Do that, and the commissioners' comments, if they have anyone going to executive session. Litigation personnel, real estate.
Do you even know that we're supposed to sign up?
Did you sign up, ma'am?
No. I'm from Bullock County, I didn't know your process was going to be called and nobody.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if anybody signed up, Lori? Yeah, well, if you want to come up, you can state your name, and we'll give you two, three minutes to say whatever you want to say. We don't interact, we just listen to what you have to say. We'll give them three minutes.
Okay. My question is, did any of y'all read the Bullock County Bryan County mitigation plan? Like the whole damn thing? I know y'all aren't supposed to interact, but it's not good. There's a bazillion one holes, that's why the commissioners who were going to come wanted to speak to you guys, because there's a bazillion one holes in that mitigation plan and those that are going to be impacted, it's not a plan. It really legitimately is not a plan. You say it's just a starting point, but at that point, if it's just a starting point, why don't you get public feedback on that mitigation plan for those that will be impacted, excuse me, before you vote something through? What you just voted through is opening yourself up to a world of liability, us in Bullock County and you guys in Bryan County, because what you passed, you're saying, oh, we'll protect these things and we'll add a little bit here and a little bit there, but when grandma slips and falls, that's because she doesn't have, or when grandma doesn't have water, the plan is y'all are going to bring her bottled water and then she has to go to an outside place to get water for showering or bathing or washing her clothes. Grandma already is unstable on her feet and you want to add in an extra level of her bathing with bottled water or something? The plan is not good and I really would ask you guys to have a public comment period to renegotiate the mitigation plan because it is not a plan. It needs to be put back to the drawing board. Even the people who wrote the plan have said that they never have written a mitigation plan before. You don't even have somebody with experience who wrote the mitigation plan. So I would ask you to talk to the new commissioners in Bullock County, talk to your new commissioner that y'all elected here, and please, please, please revisit this plan because you've got to protect the people of Bullock County and Bryan County better than the plan they just passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what was your name, ma'am?
Cassandra Michael.
Okay, all right, if you'll state your name, ma'am, we'll give you three minutes to speak also.
Good evening, my name is Belinda Davis. My husband is Ray Davis, who was not going to be able to speak today. He is a newly sworn in commissioner for Bullock County. Our name is on one of those wells that is going to go dry and is threatened in the five mile radius. Again, I had not planned to speak tonight. I get up in the morning and I go to the bathroom and I flush my toilet. I wash my hands. I go and draw some water to drink. And then I start coffee and I cry. There is nobody that's going to come and save us. We farm, my husband is the seventh generation farming. Our name is on the well, one of them that is threatened. His brother's name is on another one that's threatened. We farm the land of the name that's on another one that's threatened. This mitigation plan, engineers have looked at it. It's not a plan that's fluid. When our water goes dry, when our irrigation units that were approved by the EPD go dry, ain't nobody coming to save us. We check to see how much it's going to take to lower the wells and you know what? It's over a hundred thousand dollars just for one. If there's an eighty-five-year-old lady that lives up the road, dirt road from us, that lives on ten acres that she and her husband built, they live in a mobile home, he's dead and gone, her taxes have gone up, and now you all take their water to build subdivisions and provide water for industry and businesses? We're not against Hyundai, but the water needs to be surface water, not taking our well water. And I think that if you all will leave your businesses and come down and visit us on the farm, the Atlanta Journal came and put my husband's article on the front page back in January, the Savannah Morning News has been there and he has been on the front page of the Savannah Morning News more than once. Y'all, this is real people and real lives and the last time I checked, agricultural products are the biggest export out of the Savannah Harbor. What are y'all going to do when there is no farmland left? What are you going to do when farmers sue because they can't grow their crops because you've taken their water for subdivisions in industry in North Bryan County and Pembroke and some of the other areas? It's not right. The mitigation plan has so many holes. Water is a vital resource. The board has given us many resources here in this area. I grew up, my family came from England with a land grant, so my family goes way back as well and I grew up on a farm. Taught school for thirty-eight years, but I grew up on a farm. This is not right. My ninety-two-year-old father is trying to figure out how he is going to get water. Y'all, what do you think about this? I don't understand why you would approve something that has so many holes in it that does not meet the needs of the community.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Lawton Sag, I'm also from Bullock County. That's normally the reaction I give now when I share my name, and that's okay. I've worked in politics for a long time, including campaigns for Brian Kemp as he as he moved his way up the ladder. And I understand how the political process works in Georgia. And I've also seen, and I've had people, we've had the guts to tell me that the pressure that the governor has put on these counties has been extreme. Over in Bullock County, at our meetings, we typically have over a hundred people from the public coming out and speaking. It's disappointing to see that that does not happen here in Bryan County. And it looks like a project that we need to work on to make sure that the citizen voices are heard. There's a lot of danger for Bullock County and North Bryan, and North Bryan County, and I don't feel like their voices are being represented. We have fought as tooth and nail over the past year while things were done in secrecy by the Joint Development Authority in both Bryan and Bullock Counties. This is not what the people want, but they are being told that this is the best thing for them. And we are seeing in Bullock County that the promises that were given to us are not being fulfilled. And I have a feeling with, when these wells go online, that is once again going to be Bullock County paying the price for the decisions made in Atlanta and in Bryan County. We already know that the past poor decisions by the neighboring county like Chatham County, what it calls to Bryan County. Bryan County is now jeopardizing the quality of our water, all our money, all of our income. We are not seeing the jobs we were promised, we are not seeing the money that we were promised. And now we are being told, well, a lot of this water is going to go to residential areas in Bryan County. There's been a bait and switch there. We, the people, will be voting in the election in the next two years. I don't know if the governor expects to run again, it's my understanding that he wants to run for U.S. Senate, but I can tell you he's losing a lot of the support that he once had in rural Georgia. And when these go online and people see the dangers that are coming, they're not going to vote for him. And I want to tell you, at that point, you will no longer be answering to Brian Kemp, but will be answering to the people of both Bullock and Bryan County. I wish y'all would have had the opportunity to allow public input before you made a twenty-five year decision, but y'all made the decision not to do that. Shame on you for that, shame on the governor for pushing this through before new commissioners come on and have to take responsibility for decisions that y'all are making. It is we, the people, and those are the people that you need to stand up for. And I hope you have the guts to go to these farms in the North Bryan County and not just Richmond Hill and see in the impact and the fear that these people have over what's going to happen to the wells. I know what was told to EPD, you can't hide behind that. They were told to make this work with permits, it was fast forwarded before the new commissioners came on, and shame on them for doing that and giving it to the governor. We, the people, deserve to be protected, to have quality water, and not be sent somewhere where it's going to be misused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public want to speak? Nobody? Okay. All right, any commissioners' comments? Anybody want to speak?
Yeah, I will say this, just on behalf of myself, my family, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the past four years, not only District Three, but our entire county. I've met a lot of people that I didn't know before, I've been here since nineteen ninety-three, but I'm encouraged by the things that we have in our county going for us and it is an awful lot of growth and growth and it's a lot of challenges. But I think a lot of counties in the state of Georgia would trade with us for economic growth and the stuff we have. But thank the staff and thank the citizens for allowing me to serve.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Kim, my wife, for being here. I'd like to thank the citizens of Bryan County for electing me to do this position, or to serve in this position for the last twelve years. And I have served them well and I have no shame in the decisions that I have made. And I am a resident of North Bryan County and I have lived there all of my life. So if you think anything different, you are wrong. But most importantly, I want to thank the citizens of Bryan County and I want to thank the staff for all of our interactions. Particularly, you know, I'd like to thank Aldra, she's kind of held us to the fire there, and for Kirk, for all the arm wrestling we might do. But thank you all.
Thank you. Hey, thank you all.
Yeah, I would like to, before I quit here, I was through, but, you know, but, you know, I think it's proper that we welcome Jeff and Alex on as well.
Yes.
I think they'll do us a good job and.
Very capable and good guys.
Appreciate it.
Good?
Yep.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right, and we need a, with that being said, we need a motion to go into executive session, litigation personnel and real estate. And what we do here, we go into our executive session and then we come back out in adjournment. So that's what we do.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of real estate and litigation.
And personnel.
And personnel.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.
You didn't say a word to me.
Second.
Second.
All right.
I slid the motor, you come out and recusing yourself.
No, I didn't say it.
Third, second, third.
Oh.
Rebecca, thanks, Dallas, thank you all, good deal.
Y'all do well.
Merry Christmas everyone.
Let's do it.
To all a good night.